It's nice to get some of the sport type of clubs going. They were very popular. We had probably about seventy percent of our students did sign up to stay after school for the four weeks. In the fall, we held a number of field trips. Kindergarten went to Keller's Farm, first grade went to Keston Farm, third grade went to Buchanan Tree. And then second grade, you can see the amount of students out here, they typically do both their field trips in the spring. We also had our local firefighters stop by, involved in some EMT. You can see we had a pretty good sized group. We typically have about four or five firefighters here. And sometimes they get called away while they're in the middle of their presentation. This time we were here for the entirety of the morning. It was really a nice day. We also recently held a fall festival in the morning on thirty first. This was cooped together by the PTA in conjunction with Mr. Bale, Ms. Placo and Ms. Bert Gole. They are reading and mapping, I guess, teachers. So they put on some spooky math games, some different read alouds. You get crafts. It was just a really nice way to spend the day. We infused some fun and also some learning on top of it. Today, we had an assembly. We have not had an assembly in the building in quite a while. We had Kids Interactive Theater stopped by today. She was here a few years ago before COVID. And she did two presentations. One was Cinderella and the other was Irish Immigrants for second and third grade. And you can see she got the teachers involved, she got the students involved. It was absolutely wonderful. And we also recently swore in our safety control. I've been doing safety patrol in some form for about twenty years, whether it's here or in previous districts. I just find it's a really nice way for kids to get involved in their school, in their school community. Basically, I use them in the morning. There'll be readers at the door, if an adult's coming in and they need help carrying something, they just need help them. If a lot of students need help, we'll do that. They help out in the breakfast in the morning, opening milks, opening juices. It's a really nice program. I had fifteen students apply and took all of them. I typically take about seven or eight, but it's a really good group and, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna make it work. Deputy Tom is also part of that as well. He'll come to our meetings. We have meetings monthly and we do have donuts and Deputy Tom comes for those. We've also participated in quite a bit of professional development as well. Over to your lap. We had another training on Illustrious Math where now I'm here too. This year, my focus for observations has been going in and now seeing the Illustrious Math program in full swing in our K three classrooms. And there really is amazing to see the problem solved and the problem base curriculum. So much different than what we were previously doing. Kids are so comfortable, willing to talk about math, take risks. It really is, it's really been a nice change. We also then had whiteboard training with David Tranquer. These are OSIs specials, so he came in after we had the conference day and really kind of drew upon some of those points and answered questions that teachers may have had and left when they left the conference. We also participated in a threat assessment training that was basically all of the buildings together. Principals, psychologists, social workers, nurses, and that was put on in conjunction with Deputy Tom. School Park Committee Teachers College, which is really wonderful. We have a new coach this year. And I believe we have a second session coming up shortly. And in this building, we're continuing to plan for K four for next year. We use the school leadership team to me to discuss and talk about questions and concerns. And we've had some really good meetings and very rich meetings. And we're looking forward to keeping our fourth graders here next year. And that's all I have.
Any questions or comments for Principal Richards? Thank you, Principal Richards. So we're gonna open a hearing for the authorize, for authorizing the use of funds from the Repair Reserve Fund for the West Hurley School.
So because we are still in contract with the purchaser, but still the legal owners of the West Hurley property, we do need to maintain it. So our director facilities has gotten a quote for doing some roof repairs. We are not replacing the entire roof. That would be a much larger expense, but the roof work is on a, it's kind of equivalent of a state contract. It's a national contract that we belong to, so we don't need to bid this work out. It's already been bid out through this contract, so we can just go ahead and proceed as long as we have the funds. Because this is repair work and we have a repair reserve, the repair reserve has over a million dollars in it. Right now, the project quote is about forty-five thousand, but we want to ensure that if there are any changes that we haven't got the money. So we're asking to use up to seventy-five thousand from the repair reserve. And it's actually a really good use of the repair reserve. It's a reserve that we have that's very specific in how you can use it. You can only do repairs. You cannot actually replace anything. So if we were gonna replace the roof, we would not be able to use the repair reserve. So it's a handy reserve to have for this type of work. And that is what we are hoping to do. If we get the purchase order out and weather holds, we could have these repairs done hopefully before the winter weather.
Do any trustees or any members of the community have any questions or comments about this proposal? Okay, so is this something we hold on? We have to have a hearing and then later on the agenda, I believe, the approval of yours. Okay, so no questions or comments? Trustee Rich?
Yeah, this is really important.
Okay, great, so we will close the hearing.
And item four point zero one is our Assistant Superintendent for PPS. Amanda Allison will give a people personnel services update.
Hello, great morning. My name is Amanda Allison, I'm Assistant Superintendent for People Personnel Services. Just also wanna point out that we have Carol Green right here, our Director of Special Education. Lovely to bring out the point here out. And I, Julie Morris and Max are my important guests. We are supporting our PPS department. So I'm gonna give a little bit of a nudge here. Everything PPS. So I will try not to bore everyone, there's a lot to cover. Okay, so just to kind of clarify, PPS is made up of several different components. I didn't even put all of them on here because I have twenty minutes for this presentation. But we have special education, section five oh four, psychologists, social workers, occupational therapists, physical therapists, speech pathologists, nurses, UPK, McKinney Vento, which is Housing and Secure, Multi Tier Systems of Success, MTSS, that kind of plays between curricular instruction and PPS. And we act as the liaison for ASTER and the LaSalle programs. I didn't mention foster care, or grants, but that is also something that we handle. So first target, we'll talk about special education in section five oh four. So just a little snapshot. We had reviewed our special education plan earlier. This room had reviewed it, I believe, in August, that are originally, but just a couple of numbers. There are currently a hundred and nineteen students in district schooling that are school age, have IEPs. And thirty-three students are placing programs out of district, which include our OSIs programs, some of our approved private programs and residential. Initiatives that we have booked at, we have created procedure guides and Google classrooms for all of our staff so that they have the forms and information and processes that they need. It's available with links and it's very helpful if there's a question. We make sure that we go through it and support our staff with the information they need to provide us. We have done professional development and training in specialized instruction and goal development. We've worked closely with OSIs to help support our teachers in creating SMART goals and what to put in the IEP to make it legally defensible. We have had continued training and coaching in IEP writing and that's something that we're continuing to do into this year. And that's also supported by OSIs. And we have done some training in full secondary transition planning for our secondary students so that our IEPs can be compliant. And we're really focusing on the next chapter for our students, once they leave high school, so that we can plan around that. So the planning discussion about IEPs in five oh fours, I just wanted to give a little snapshot about where we are. Basic difference, both plans provide for accommodations and modification, but only an IEP provides for special education or special instruction for students who are K through twelve. A five oh four plan is created for students with a disability to access their education at the school. Usually, it includes some services, but a lot of accommodations to help even the disadvantaged and deployed students. Currently, we have ninety-one students with a five oh four plan, K to twelve. We are in the process of five oh four annual reviews. So we do that every year and we are working hard on supporting all of our students and families. So we've done some really exciting initiatives with reading and math, and this is where Ms. Morris comes into play here. The first one that I'm really, really excited about is our work in Gillingham Training. We partnered with Margin through Multi-Center, which is a educational consultant group. And we are training twelve teachers and speech pathologists right now to become certified academic language practitioners. And they, we have one teacher who is being certified as an academic language therapist, which is the next level up. It is incredibly hard and time consuming, tons of work, practice them, very difficult, very challenging. And our staff are doing amazing and really trying to help us build capacity so we can provide specialized reading instruction for our most complex learners. We can also use this as a tier three MTSS strategy for our students so that we're not just waiting till we get to special education to provide student interventions that they need. We also have trained several of our reading teachers in Wilson, which is another multi, multi讀的 reading program. We partnered with Wilson and trained four reading teachers to be Wilson Dyslexia practitioners. Currently, we are supporting over thirty-two students for Wilson across our building. And again, Wilson also provides multi-tiered level two and three support for MTSS, who are students. So it's just another way that we're trying to help our learners get what they need. And there's Ms. Morris right there. So we have really been working hard on direct instruction. I think in the summer, we presented some textbook PowerPoints on some DI direct instruction textbooks that we were trying to get the board to approve for seventh and eighth grade. And our, it follows the direct instruction plan. We have been using direct instruction programs in our self-contained classes at the elementary level. And some of the things that we have seen are students that have grown in meets and bounds. Kids coming up to us and saying, "I'm a leader." And that is a really powerful statement to hear. Students looking at themselves as scholars and feeling confident. Students that are going into less restrictive environments because they're able to access grade level content now. So it's really great. We use the DI program in both reading and math. It works with constant assessment and constant progress monitoring. Students love it. They go home reading. Max loves it. Everybody has had a really, he has some nice, nice improvements. So we're continuing to look at that we can expand training and teaching our staff so that we can continue to offer that program. Right now, the way our graduation pathways work for students that continue to be safe assesses need to get to that algebra regions and that is a really hard region to get to. So we're trying to build foundational alignment with our self-contained classes to kind of grow our curriculum directions and meet and renew them to support that goal. For children, children's speeches, but we're looking at that. Okay, so also talking about mental health. I presented to you guys some updates about mental health in our district before. Again, these power are psychologists, social workers and school counselors who are in our district. Again, this is where we stand comparatively to the other districts in our region. This was information from last year, so some of the district sizes may be a little bigger than they are now. But this is where we still have the same amount of psychologists and social workers. It's important to point out that in terms of our psychologists, we do have one that is grant funded through our and that grant is running out at the end of this school year. We also continue to have one full-time ASTER social worker and we are still continuing to work with LaSalle. So I presented to you guys last year where we were with ASTER and I am happy to say at this point, we have grown exponentially in the support that ASTER has given to the point where there was no waitlist for ASTER services for our students. This year, we had also gotten COLMH, which is the Oxford Mental Health Approval, to have our ASTER therapists house at Division one day a week to support students from that end of the district. We're also looking to explore that option in Ben and Woodstock for next year. So we'll be working with our building principals to explore that feasible or possible option. But you can see, we've grown from, when we first got our therapists here in February of twenty, twenty twenty-three, we had seven active pieces. Now we're at thirty-four. And there's, we still have some five or six that are starting. So we're really, I'm really pleased that we're at that point and now we've been able to provide that service to this community. We're also, we also built all of our LaSalle spots. That is a county initiative that partners with LaSalle School, which is set up all the way to provide intensive DIA, peace management and therapy to families. It's free. It was only for middle school. They opened it up to the twelfth and we filled those spots really well. So all of our commissions just raised about having this support. So it's really wonderful that we can offer that. Okay, we did service. So we are continuing across the board with psychologists and social workers, OT, TT, speech, to gain more training around evaluation so that we can support students. We trained our staff in the AIDAS, which is an autism-related evaluation to help us with the educational classification of autism and support our families. And we've looked at also training around reading and helping our psychologists to really support that. We are going to be having actually tomorrow, a functional behavioral assessment training for all of our clinical, clinical staff. We're looking at to re-envision the role of family and community needs on social worker. We are building capacity in assistive technology. One of our speech developers, Emily Parkin, got nationally certified in assistive technology and she's supporting us in-house and being able to provide trainings, support, consultation quickly to students. And as our comp, our, our learning needs grow and our need for technology increases, it's such a great resource to have. We have supported prompt training to support articulation for teaching language therapists. We're all working together to support MTSS. And we are, and more access to professional development that is specific to our related service providers. Okay, McKinney Vento is our federal policy regarding housing and secure. So you can, I just kind of pull the numbers of where we are. So last year, as a total for, for Aunt Diora, we had about twenty-four families that were at one point housing insecure. We had about twenty-seven and twenty-one, twenty-two for the entire year. In November of twenty-three, twenty-four, we are already at twenty-seven. So you can see where that data is showing us that this continues to be an issue for our families. We know that housing and security is an issue, but this number just speaks to that. So in our, my, my department, we work to make it as much of a seamless transition for families. It does impact transportation when we're struggling to sometimes have drivers and buses. It's certainly impacted, but we try to make it as seamless and spend support our students and families as best we can with whatever they need. And nurses, so again, these are the amount of nurses that, that we have as compared to the other districts around us. And I put in also their subrates because nurse subs are a very particular issue across not just our district or our region, but probably across most of the country at this point, nurses and bus drivers. So we want to stay competitive and we want to continue to try and support our nurses and we want people to want to be here. So I did put in the subrate that I believe we are asking the board to approve tonight at about one ninety-five, which keeps us competitive with our need rate district. We came to that number based on looking at what the districts around us have been doing and they have all been increasing. We're all trying to do the same thing and fight over our family, the same people. But we are trying to work to support our nurses so that they can, if they need to, if they're ill, they can take a day off to, to heal themselves. Okay, UPK. So we're currently supporting over fifty students in UPK this year, which is a really big increase from years in the past. We think we were at thirty-two students in years past, but the district heard parents' concerns about needing more access to UPK and we have supported that endeavor. So we currently have thirty-two students at First Sense and sixteen students at Holman and no waitlist. And we actually still have room in both of those programs to be able to support more students. We have new initiatives. We have a certified occupational therapy assistant that is there to provide mandated CTSU, which is the Community of Preschool Special Education, OT services, as well as whole class support. So she is starting on handwriting programs and handwriting programs as a whole class support so that we can support that transition to kindergarten even more so. And she can provide almost like a preschool MTSS model for our, our kids so that we get them what they need quickly instead of having to wait for a whole exhaustive evaluation process. Aunt Diora, it's not a new initiative, but we are our own preschool evaluating agency, which is really helpful because it's hard to find people to come out here and be able to do evaluations. That allows us to evaluate and treat students at a preschool level, which we do a lot for speech and for OT. How do you describe it for sounds like? So it's, it's very, very, very nice. So we are, it also allows us to be reimbursed by the county for that work, which is certainly helpful. Again, I know that since we're gonna have it in her presentation, it touched upon MTSS, so I'm not going to go over everything around branching lines. This is also the slide that I did put in my mental health presentation. But branching lines is the platform that we are working on getting our district to be easy to align our programs. Where are we now? We are building foundations and infrastructure. So we are working on getting ourselves all aligned with the language and the processes and building our handbook as a team district-wide so that we can start a slow and gradual rollout plan to support our staff and students. We're also working on tier one classroom management training. We're doing that initiative in our elementary buildings. I believe we talked about that in some of his presentations, where utilizing our super points, conferences to support that component too. So next steps. What's left for us to do? Much, but we continue to address the growing mental health needs of the county. We continue, it's so important to build capacity as our learner needs grow, become more complex. It's important that we stay on top of training and the support that we need our staff to have. It's also important as we go through teacher shortages and special shortages that we are growing our own to be able to help take that work over. So it's important that we continue to support things like assistive technology and prompt and behavioral support. We are continuing to grow alignment vertically and horizontally between our grade levels and our apartments. We are continuing to grow behavioral and academic support for our complex learners. We're using a lot of professional development and training. We are continuing and looking at really equitable programs for that in Lexup as we look at reconfiguration. We plan for course offerings with retirement and difficulty finding staff with contact-related certifications. So we really have to look at our data. When we get to the high school level, we're looking at teaching more intensive programs. There has to be certain certifications that a teacher will have that's context-specific. Those are sometimes hard to find. So we have to be really careful and really thoughtful of decisions that we make around what we can provide to students and how, and also how we maybe reimagine things in terms of how we think about that. We are continuing to roll out MTSS. And one big thing that we're really looking to do with our parent and social worker is really looking at how we can build attendance supports for our students and our families. And with it for me, any questions?
Trustee Mitch?
Thank you very much. This is very impressive and I, and I really appreciate the, the round of bite. There's so much that goes into your work and so having this conference report is very helpful. I was particularly struck by the DI work, Ms. Morris, and thank you for your contributions to each of these families and these children's success. I was curious if you could help me or maybe catch me up, forgive me, on the conversation around contained classrooms versus integrating children into general and I'm curious where we are in that effort. I know there was a pilot at some point in middle school and we talked about different pros and cons of both. I'm just curious if you'd give us a sense of where we are in that process.
Sure, so it's always our goal to have students in the least restrictive environment. That can differ for each student. What might be least restrictive for one may be over this to help our, our teachers and related service providers make a clear decision around. service providers make a clear decision around what would be appropriate. We have closed some sections of self-contained because we just did not have the numbers to support that. We certainly have more students that are in a full-teach model. I think one of the difficulties around only having one level of a continuum is that there's nowhere else to go if you only have a criminal label, only have a consultant teacher model. It makes it very difficult to individualize an IEP if a student has a significant disability in the area of math or reading or why not. So I think, and I think New York State would agree, that it's important that you have a continuum. It doesn't have to be every single thing in the world, but different options so that you can support the individual needs of our students. With our direct instruction model, we have been able to see a nice amount of students, be able to go out into a less restrictive environment with a great deal of success because we have remediated the gaps in some of the instruction. There's a lot of work that happens in terms of being able to transition students properly, making sure that they can wait, that they don't meet, that there's used to be, and to have a lot more students and more disruptions and more input, that there's less individualized attention and direct reinforcement given and that there's a lot more demands happening. So we work really carefully at being able to shape that and support students so that it is successful for everybody.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much. Truly impressive and we're so grateful for the good work that the department's doing. Item 5.01 is acceptance of minutes. The board hereby accepts the minutes of the October 24th, 2023 meeting. May I have first? Trustee Ramondo, second? Trustee Jerome? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. And Superintendent Wills will report district news.
Good evening. As we all know, we are headed into the winter holiday season. I'm sure everyone's looking forward to celebrating Thanksgiving next week. And then, believe it or not, it is a short four weeks to the winter break. But there will be many opportunities to support our students during this time. And just as a note, our concerts are a traditional highlight of the season. I encourage everyone to attend them if possible. Tomorrow night is another in our series of parent workshops. This session will focus on addressing problem behavior and developing specific skills to be successful with your child. The workshop is virtual and will be from 7:00 to 8:30. The Zoom link can be found on our website. It's a pop-up, so it comes right up when you open the website. We had our first meeting of the elementary transition committee last week and we want to thank all of the building representatives who volunteered to join this committee. It is another channel of communication for us so that we can keep everyone informed of the progress we're making while at the same time having another sounding board with various perspectives. And lastly, the board of regents heard recommendations from the Blue Ribbon Commission yesterday. So the commission provided 12 recommendations that will be considered by the board of regents. The recommendations all fell within four priority groups. The first one, consideration of multiple pathways leading to one diploma. And then, review of assessment flexibility, the understanding of meaningful life-ready credentials, and culturally responsive curriculum instruction and assessment. The presentation and the complete list of recommendations can be found on the Board of Regents' website, but it's really important to remember that these are recommendations of the commission. They have yet to be considered and prioritized by the Board of Regents, so there is no timeline of implementation yet. So it's worthwhile to review them and be familiar with what is being recommended, but we need to see what the Board of Regents is going to do. The next step is for the Board of Regents to discuss what's been presented and then determine what changes they will look to implement. The review process for the Board of Regents is projected to continue into the spring. That's all it says, the spring of 2024, with no specific date or timeline for what steps they're going to take during that review. And then the step after that would be the implementation, but there really is no timeline identified for that at all. So it's really interesting and important work that they're doing and I think it shows a real openness from the Board of Regents to be considering these things. So it'll be interesting to see where we go.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions or comments for Superintendent? All right. Oh, sorry, Trustee Mitch. Thank you very much, Superintendent. Can you remind us who participates on the elementary transition team? Is it staff primarily?
It is all staff, yep. But it's staff from all of our different bargaining committees.
Any other questions? We will have a report from our student representative. Whoops, sorry. Budget calendar. All right. So we have the, thanks, Trustee Story. We have the 2023, 24 budget calendar, 24, 25 budget calendar in front of us. And it's here for our review. Sorry, can we need to know about that, Superintendent?
There's nothing drastically different from previous year's budget calendars, but we wanted to give the board an opportunity to look at it and digest it and then we will put it on the next agenda for adoption if that's okay? We didn't want to ask you to see it and vote on it on the same night.
Trustees have questions about the proposed budget calendar at the moment? I know we're just seeing it for the first time. Okay. Trustee Mitch?
So budget-wise, there's two big things coming up. First, the transportation contract and the teacher's contract. Is that anything scheduled here?
So this calendar just goes over kind of the process of building the budget and what presentations will be brought to the board. The transportation contract is a separate but very important process. We hope to have that finalized well before we're trying to adopt the budget. The teacher's contract doesn't expire until June 30th. We are starting our negotiations depending on how far we get with, if we're very fortunate, we will resolve it for the budget. If not, we will have to make some assumptions and propose a budget.
Thank you.
You'll get super familiar with the budget process as the calendar starts to reveal itself. It feels like the budget process never ends. So it's just a big part of our job and it's great that we have it all spelled out for us like this. And now, our student representative will report for us. Sophia Adado.
Hello. So recently in student government, we've been in the process of reaching out to professors from local universities to gauge their interest in giving an informational assembly on consent. Additionally, we picked out benches that we'd like to have in our outdoor classroom in the spring and we're excited to see this project through the next stages. Throughout high school, seniors are continuing to apply to colleges and there have been various colleges visiting and meeting students in the guidance offices, colleges such as Montpellier and upcoming Tumi Delta, I have to say. Last week, the junior and senior girls competed in a powerball football game. It was a blast. Unfortunately, the juniors came up victorious, but this past weekend, two cross-country runners competed in this state's tournament. Senior Matty Mills scored 73rd in the girls' race and scored a career best time. And freshman Graham Lorwa finished 77th in the boys' race, qualifying for the state championships. Congrats to them. Winter sports just started Thursday, because on Monday, basketball trials spanning this entire week. The theater department is in the process of finding a director for the musical and choosing a musical. The National Arts Society will be organizing a coke drive in the coming weeks in collaboration with the Ulster Innovation Department. And lastly, the school panel, our newspaper is coming out next week, so keep your eyes peeled up. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. Does anyone have a question or a comment for Sophia?
I just want to say that it's always really exciting to get a copy of the school newspaper. It's always so well done. And I've just been super excited either attending sporting events or reading about them on social media. It seems like we've had a really, really terrific year.
Yeah. Great. Where is the outdoor classroom?
That is a wonderful question. It's in one of our main quarters, in the center of our school.
Yeah. Okay. Item 8.01, board district news. Do any trustees have board news to share?
I just want to share that actually, Trustee Jerome and I had the pleasure of attending the, goodnight ladies, of attending the county, the all-county choral festival recently. And we went over there to watch elementary students sing. And Trustee Jerome's daughter was there and my granddaughter was there. And it was amazing to me that, well, a couple of things. First of all, kudos to our music teachers. They're amazing. They were able to work with four elementary students that were chosen from Antora, worked with them to agree that then on the Friday night before the Saturday concert, the, all the children from the whole county met for the first time and were able to practice Friday night and then Saturday morning and performed beautifully, really, really spectacular. And the conductor, Patoris, was so complimentary of our students and our teachers. So I just wanted to give a shout-out to all those folks.
I didn't feel very well today, I forgot. But if you're ready, then also just to say that it was so beautiful to see all of those people, children from all different areas, all different types of families, you know, making this incredible setup together. It was, it made, it went really, 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 really good. So yes, it was a joy.
Trustee Jerome?
Not positive this categorizes as board news, but I volunteered the fall festival here and I also was just so impressed with that, with the kids' work, ecstatic. I've really overheard more than once say, "This is the best day of my life." Like, they had the freak toss and bowling outside and the sack race and painting pumpkins and it was just unbelievable. It was amazing.
I have to say, that was another thing, I forgot to mention that, seeing the fall festivals here at Woodstock and Bennett and Venetia on social media. My granddaughter goes to school at Bennett, she's so excited about the fall festival. And I know from volunteering here at Woodstock, when my granddaughter went to school here, it's a really big event and it's a lot of fun. It's always well done. All right. We will acknowledge publice heard comments from our last board meeting. And last time our speakers were Stephanie Bryant and Esther Vanant. Item 10.01 is publice heard. The board appreciates hearing from the public, including students on any agenda or non-agenda item. Please understand that by our adopted parliamentary procedure, the board can't engage in discussion or answer questions during publice heard. Please know that we hear you and we take all your comments into consideration. The board does reserve the right to correct any inaccuracies or misinformation during publice heard. Please limit your comments to three minutes, be civil, and do not name any particular individuals or promote any commercial ventures or products. People wishing to express individual student or personal concerns can bring them to the superintendent's attention in private. And tonight, we have Stephanie Bryant. I'm done.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Bryant with Open and I love to hear you guys talking about the music. That's what we're here to talk about today, so it feels good to be on brand. Bennett Elementary has three outstanding music teachers for students that provide award-winning choral band, orchestra, and jazz programs. Last year, the Bennett Jazz Ensemble and Youth Corral performed at the state legislature to celebrate music in our schools and was awarded top honors at the New York State Music Association, was awarded Gold of Distinction at Bennett Elementary program. Due to the prior school board's decision to move the sixth grade into the middle school effective next year, the middle school's going to get 60 band kids in addition to the seventh and eighth graders already currently enrolled. But unfortunately, we only have one music teacher that spans from the middle school into the high school in addition to the orchestra teacher at the high school. I am deeply concerned that our current award-winning elementary school students are not going to receive the same level of outstanding education that they've come to expect and deserve. Mr. Boyer, who currently runs the band and jazz youth program at Bennett with principal bono support, will submit a proposal to the administration to create a transition for the middle school to have a robust music program. Please give him whatever he asks for. He's incredible and is just a mentor to both my children. I also want to personally invite you, if you haven't had a chance to experience the Bennett Jazz Program, they have a holiday concert on December 3rd at 3:00 p.m. here in Woodstock at Overlook United Methodist Church on 233 Tinker Street. And with my remaining time, I would just love to play for you the actual clip from this month in which we were again awarded by the state Gold of Distinction. Hopefully it works. Because the upright base is too, too much to carry.
I'll have to come back to the next publice heard or have Baxter show a little bit of jazz set, so look forward to that. And thank you and happy holidays.
Thank you, thank you. When's Baxter available to perform? Whatever. Great, thank you. So on to item 11.01. We hereby resolve that by recommendation of the superintendent of schools, that the board of education of the Antora Central School District approved the following trip for the Antora High School French Club to London, Paris, and, I don't know how to pronounce it. Okay. L'Or, L'Or, France. From July 1st, 2024 to July 10th, 2024, the participants will fund the trip. May I have the first? Trustee Story, second? Trustee Ramondo? Any questions or comments? Trustee Story?
This looks like a very interesting trip. Maybe we should shout out?
It looks like a fabulous trip. I looked at the itinerary before putting it on the agenda for the board to consider. I think any student who goes on this trip will have a lifelong memory of a wonderful experience.
I did check in with Principal Edelman, just with concerns about the cost, and he said they are absolutely dedicated to fundraising, so if there is a family who is going to have some difficulty, everything possible will be done to make this trip available.
So we will go ahead and vote upon this. Trustee Jerome? We, trustee Mitchell Moran?
Yes.
Trustee Goodrich?
Yes.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Yes.
That's you, Ms. Smith. Item 11.02 is continued discussion of the 2023-24 board goals. I know that we have, excuse me, we have a copy of the suggested amendments and just suggestions that followed our conversation, gosh, four weeks ago, when we first started discussing our board goals. And just one thing that I'd like to say before we kind of launch into a conversation about this is that after, after that conversation and after reading the recommendations and suggestions moving forward, I do think that it would be in our best interest to keep a brief, well-stated goal and at least one brief, well-stated goal that the superintendent could then add action steps to that, that we would all be able to weigh in on and, you know, I hate the word supervise, but what's a better word? Yeah, oversee as, as the year unfolds. So that's what I'm interested to hear from trustees on their suggestions. Trustee Story?
As I'm looking at this, there's a lot of suggestions that just aren't in the board purview. So I think this is something that we have to make sure, as we say basically in our league, what we are supposed to be doing is the overall goal, and then the superintendent will make her goals upon ours. So we have to, we're not the nitty-gritty of this. We are the broad thing. I agree with trustee Bishop's thing. We don't need something long and wordy. Something short and sweet to get the point across. But like I said, a lot of these things that I see are really are not board things. There's, they may be a personal thing that you wouldn't like the district to go into a direction, but they're not, you know, these are more, these aren't the broad strokes that we need to do as a board. These are the nitty-gritty, which actually some of these suggestions are more downline. I may even say more principle level, like their goals, because that's how this goes, the board, superintendent, then really public goals. So that's just my vote of government continuing on this discussion. Because I do like to see Lynch's, to support the development of a district-wide long-term, long-term planning centers, 21st, 21st century global citizenship. I think that's something that says where we want to go in in the direction we are leaning towards without getting down to the nitty-gritty, which isn't the board purview, which that goes to our superintendent and our staff. So there's my thought. Thank you, David.
Thank you. Trustee Jerome?
Thank you for that guidance. I can see how that makes sense. And I have to also say that your phrasing, trustee Lynch, I'm quite agree with too, I think that's a point statement. All of these things, I don't know where they fit in. I guess I'll learn as we talk about our values, but perhaps they don't fit in here. But I agree with trustee Story that that seems to me to be the one that captures the broadest goal and the visionary goal.
Thank you. Trustee Lynch?
Thank you, yeah. And I, I think, I hear what you're saying, you know, as well, trustee Story, but I would, I would hope that, you know, 21st century, you know, global citizenship doesn't include 21st century, some of the other things that are in the other goals from our other trustees. So just, you know, I think it's important that we let the superintendent take those action steps as we suggest. Trustee Bishop, and we'd love to see EB buses and, you know, the arts and other things. It'd be something that we continue to focus our conversations on because they are just so urgent.
Thank you, trustee Lynch. Any other thoughts? Trustee Goodrich?
Yeah, like what trustee Story said, you know, I just haven't taken a level, too low of a level of detail here, but then we can bring it up a little. We can see where that global state is going to include. The guy, I agree, who just bring it up a little, have more code, code.
Thank you. Anybody else? Trustee Ramondo? Hey, agree with that, Bethany? Trustee Jerome?
I'm sorry, I'm a little fuzzy tonight, but then, so then, once we have this broad overarching goal, the action steps are something that we, you know, we, so we've sort of passed what we think would be the action steps, of course, that will fall to you, but we will see those in some form in the future. How does that work, basically?
I would target coming back in the next meeting with those, or at least a rough draft. I need to, the, 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 the time between now and then, we'll put a bit of a footprint, I believe, and work through the team and get everything back, but we will do our best and we will.
And then I would expect that with the development of those action steps, then there will be periodic reporting, you know, updates at board meetings, you know, just thinking about how last year went, and we should have felt like at every single board meeting there was an update, you know, with our, with our plans. So does anyone suggest any wordsmithing of the goal? Trustee Mitchell Moran?
Yes, so maybe we could keep basically what trustee Lynch wrote and then just maybe add slightly hints at our, our other ideas, like, you know, planning centers, 21st century global citizenship, including our buildings and, you know, just kind of tie in a little more, expand it slightly.
Trustee Story?
I get that you want to expand it more, but that's not, that's the opposite of keeping it broad. Or we're, we're supposed to be at the 30,000 feet, keeping it broad, but you've just said you like it, but then you want to expand more and make it more detailed.
I mean, I just need like slightly more, I think, like buildings is pretty broad, but, I mean, I'm just suggesting it. But yeah, I just think, as trustee Lynch says, maybe, you know, try to include just slightly more specific.
Trustee Lynch?
Thank you. I was actually just looking at trustee Ramondo's wording. Know if that helps you, trustee Mitchell Moran, a little bit more of the, I think, talking about, sorry, similar, but just, you know, focusing on academic programs that serve our district mission. Right, fostering practical students, something like that is what you're suggesting. I mean, it's a bit more specific to our mandate.
Yeah, just including maybe some other of these ideas, like more equal access, you know, and just maybe even like a word or two for each one, if it's general.
Trustee Ramondo?
Maybe a broad room would be infrastructure, so the planning centers, planning centers, 21st century global citizenship and infrastructure. So that's broad, because that's everything. What it counts for, not only the student, but then everything that's come from the school to the student.
I guess my concern would be just getting rid of all of this that we had worked on and clearly want. I understand some of it is too specific, but to maybe just try to include it, some of it slightly more, rather than like dispose of this whole first page.
I have a feeling, and I could be wrong, but I have a feeling that when we see the action steps, they will include much of what we're trying to put into a word or two. And they'll be much more well-developed and specific to what the superintendent and the administration need to do in order to allow us to support the development of a district-wide long-term plan, district-wide long-term plan that centers 21st century global citizenship. I, I, I guess it's a matter of trusting the process. I don't know, you know, if, if, you know, if we can agree on that. Trustee Jerome?
So I'm just looking at, you know, looking at that first sentence of trustee Ramondo's. You know, the district, I don't know if it's wordsmithing overseas, I don't know if you've got to work, but the district sees students' equitable access to high-quality, modern student-centered, I would take up academic programs. I would just make it programs because I would want to include the arts and extracurriculars and sports and things like that. But that's just a little bit more specific. It is pretty vague, but just gets a little bit more into the fact that it's, if there's a standard involved and it's for student-centered, as a small district, perhaps, and just a bit of that, maybe that would be a little bit more bone to build on.
So if we crossed off the word academic?
Crossed off, that's.
And the, and the second sentence?
In the first.
No, and, and the whole second.
And the whole sentence, yeah. That would just end that equitable ac-, so basically, students' equitable access to high-quality, modern student-centered programs, you know, however that fits in. But that was the part that I thought was.
What about, okay.
Because we have this piece of, oh, and then I was gonna, I mean, I was gonna blend that with the, with the trustee Lynch's, I was gonna sort of like.
Sustained, yes.
Yeah, but like that, these from trustee Ramondo and then what, what, you know, just to, to talk about the, I guess trustee Ramondo's comment does is it brings a two-part district specifically, whereas Lynch's, trustee Lynch's more of a, even a higher vision, instead of like just bringing those two perspectives, the macro and the micro, in a very simple way. Maybe that would be, and then the action points under that, of course, are going to be very specific and detailed and, you know.
Trustee Lynch?
I'm just making a suggestion, but maybe we could blend the two where you're going, which is basically to just start, you know, to support the development of a district-wide long-term plan that centers students' equitable access to high-quality, modern, student-centered programs that serve our district mission of fostering productive citizenship. Would that work? I like it. Anybody else?
I'm gonna leave that again. I just wanna take that quickly back to you.
Sure. Trustee Goodrich?
So I liked the idea of adding 21st century infrastructure. I was gonna add 21st century communications. As we all know, the way we communicate now is very different from what we did 10 years ago. So that's just.
Sir, can you read that one more time?
Holy shit.
To support the development of a district-wide long-term plan that centers students' equitable access to high-quality, modern, student-centered programs that serve our district mission of fostering productive 21st century global citizenship? Is that what you're asking? 21st century? Global citizenship. I like it.
Sir, the district's mission involves our, must be productive.
Productive, 21st century, global citizenship. Do you have the district clerk?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to read it back to us?
I have it. A short thing. To support the development of the district-wide long-term plan that centers students' equitable access to high-quality, modern, student-centered programs that serve our district's mission of fostering productivity, product. This is embarrassing. District's mission of fostering productive, 21st century global citizenship.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you. Do we have consensus? We don't need to vote right on this? Do we, uh, all right. So, let's see if I can find where I am. Okay, I don't have language here for voting, but we will vote on it. So we will vote on the board call as read by our, our board clerk. So do we have to re-solve it? Trustee Lynch?
Sorry to interrupt you, just a quick question. Does that mean we're, we're voting on having one goal as a board member, as a board this year? Will there be more goals potentially?
I, I think that having more than one goal this year is a little too ambitious. I would, my advice to the board is that we consider. I would, my advice to the board is that we consider just this goal because it's a huge goal. It's a giant goal. And I would love to see all of our efforts going into this goal to make sure that we can achieve it and that we do it right. And I feel like the administration is going to be working really, really hard to make that happen. So my suggestion is to go with one goal.
Trustee Story?
I'd compare with that, only go with one goal because if the board has more goals, then that's how to give more goals to our superintendent. And we are already consolidating, we're close to the nation's legislative year. So we are already planning, making plans on how to close one building and bring us all to bed in. So there's a lot of work and planning that are going on that is going to take a lot of precedence over having two, three, four, 10 goals, which it just doesn't make any sense. This makes sense when the masterwork goes into this goal and the other things that we have going on this full year to accomplish.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
And I think also the appeal of it being so broad is that you can kind of make it what you want it to be. So if you secretly have other goals, they can kind of slip in there.
Trustee Jerome?
I'm always an advocate for simplicity, especially with something so important as at stake as our student, the future of this district. So I agree with trustee Mitchell Morrell that this will allow us, this is very special, an important year, and we really need to try to do everything we can to meet this goal that we set, I would say. So one for one goal.
Great. So I'm gonna make up language. The result of Board of Education of the Ulster Central School District is adopting our one goal as read recently, moments ago, by our board clerk. May I have the first? Trustee Story, second, trustee Ramondo, any discussion? So we'll vote trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you so much. Can I, I just want to, I just realized something when I jumped forward without realizing that we had to vote. And I went back on my, my copy of the agenda and I realized that I did not ask if anybody else wanted to speak and publicly heard. Like after Ms. Bryant spoke, I engaged, right? And then I forgot to ask if anybody else wanted to speak. This, okay, all right, thank you, I'm so sorry about that. Okay, our next item is 11.03, and we have the opportunity to continue that discussion on parliamentary procedure. It's something that we could do tonight and it's also something that we could table for tonight and discuss at our next meeting. The reason why I'm suggesting that or even bringing it up is because, and I totally forgot about this, but I believe that Dr. Will Christiansen did send us a copy of a, not board norms, but board code of ethics from a district that he spoke with us about, I don't think it was the last time we saw him or maybe not even the time before that. It's been a bit of time since we had that conversation with him. But I'm wondering if, if we shared that with the full board and then, and kind of compare that with our, our board norms, which it really kind of parallels our board norms a lot. And then consider some of the things that we discussed at the nation meeting. And maybe do that in December, if that would be okay with everyone.
Trustee Story?
I'm all for postponing it to the next meeting too, but we'll discuss it as like our board norms, not the parliamentary procedures. Because I think that's what has been confusing me from the beginning is the use of the parliamentary procedures, not really what we're talking about, that's Robert's rules of order, we're talking more about code of ethics and board norms. That's what we're talking about. So I think if we could, you know, share that thing that we've received and discuss this at our next board meeting.
Yeah, I think, I think calling it parliamentary procedures was because it was tied to, we were, we were discussing our norms and our, and our personal interactions as, I think, as board trustees at the board table. And also tying into that conversation, what I felt was not strictly adhering, you know, to Robert's rules or parliamentary procedures, but I do think that it all falls under our code of, I mean, our board norms or our code of ethics. So we could rename it on the next agenda to board norms. And honestly, it's a conversation that started, you know, several months ago.
Superintendent Larranay and I went to, at NISW, when we were bustle, we went to a presentation about code of ethics for board members and things like that. We should be able to follow the PowerPoint to everybody to include that in there.
Is everybody okay with having this conversation in December? Okay, super. Thank you so much. Do we need a break? Oh, we have to do taxes, sorry. Did everybody sign? Okay. Being a grandmother for the second time, I'm going to be very distracted and I'm going to say, sorry. Okay, item 11.04 unpaid taxes. Be adhered by resolved by the Board of Education of the Ulster Central School District upon recommendation by the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve the warrant for unpaid taxes in the amount of $3,074,454.83 for Ulster County and agree by signing such warrant. Be adhered by resolved by the Board of Education of the Ulster Central School District upon recommendation of superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve the warrant for unpaid taxes in the amount of $26,293.92 for Green County. May I have the first? Trustee Ramondo, second? Trustee Jerome? Any discussion? Superintendent?
Sure, I just wanted to share trustee Goodrich had actually noted earlier that it seems like a not, not outrageously large amount of unpaid taxes. And in preparation for a comment like that, I did a quick analysis of the past six years. And the Ulster County unpaid taxes are very similar to what they've been, not the highest or lowest in the past six years. The lowest that Ulster County unpaid has been has been five and a quarter percent of the levy. But the highest is 10 and a half percent, so we are at about six and a half percent this year, which is fairly typical. Green County is actually significantly lower than it has been in the past six years. Aside from this year, the lowest that it has ever been is 191,000. So something good has happened in Green County and people were able and willing to pay their school taxes at a higher degree than they have in recent past. But on hold, this is fairly typical.
Trustee Jerome?
What does, so what does one do if one missed their deadline or may have an oversight and wishes to remedy it?
Absolutely.
How, how would you go about that?
You call the Ulster County Department of Taxation and Finance. Once we stop our collecting, we are literally unable and not allowed to accept any more tax payments. The list of those who have not paid goes to the county. There is a small grace period where people can pay and pay just the typical late penalty. If you don't get into that grace period, then the county will add your school taxes onto your land tax bill in January. Unfortunately, that includes a 10% penalty. So it's a little, it's a little more of a burden. But that is how that works and for us, because we are a central school district in this county, we send our list of unpaid taxes to the county, the county makes us hold and then they take on the collection.
So Ulster County Department of Taxation.
Anyone who has a question can still call our tax collector or the business office, get the number, get the contact information. But we are literally unable and not allowed to collect once the collection period is closed because the county will pay us that bill and then they collect it.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Trustee Goodrich?
Thanks for your time, because I've always wondered, you know, what does a school do if it don't get paid?
Any other questions or comments? So we will vote on the paying unpaid taxes. Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell? Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. And we, trustee Story reminded me that we need to go back to item 11.03 because we are agreeing to table that conversation, so we will take a vote on that. May I have the first? Trustee Story, second, trustee Goodrich? And we'll vote. Uh, trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
And trustee Story?
Yes.
That's unanimous, thank you. Now we need a break. All right, we'll take a five-minute break. Okay, we are back from our break and we are on item 13.01, the consent agenda. Board hereby approves items number 13.02 through 13.08. May I have the first? Trustee Story, second, trustee Mitchell Morrell? Any discussion or comments? I will, I'll just say that trustee Mitchell Morrell was out of the country for the week and so I did review the schedule to you and everything appeared to be in order. So we, any other questions or comments? So we'll vote on that. Trustee. So we'll vote on that, trustee Jerome? Aye. Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Yes.
That's unanimous, thank you. Item 14.01. The Board of Education hereby approves items number 14.02 through 14.06, which are the contracts and independent contract containers. Ma'am first, trustee Goodrich second, trustee Ramondo. Any comments or discussion? So we'll take a vote, trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Jerome? I'm sorry, trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch? Aye. Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you. And on to policies. We have first readings of policy 2120, 5686. I'm sorry, I'm just going to read what their, what the titles are for the public. 2120 is use of parliamentary procedure. Policy 5686 is use of surveillance cameras in the school district. Policy 7611 is programs for students with disabilities. I mean, I D E A at New York's education law, Article 89. Policy 7619, use of timeouts and emergency physical restraint. And policy 7670, impartial hearing officer appointment and compensation. So we have been providing with those policies and we'll take some time to read them, review them. If you have any questions, please bring them back to the next board meeting and we can discuss them and we'll take a vote on them at that board meeting. Item 15.06 is policy 7211, which has been reviewed and is okay as is. So when we say that it's been reviewed, it's been reviewed by the policy committee?
It was first reviewed by NISPA when they did their policy analysis. They indicated that it was okay as is and then the policy committee looked at it and said yes to be reviewed.
Great. So, so the Board of Education hereby accepts policy 7211 and has reviewed. Ma'am first, trustee Ramondo second. Trustee Story? Any comments or discussion? Okay, we'll vote, trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee, trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous, thank you very much. And we are up to committee reports. Have any committees met? And if so, do they have reports?
Trustee Goodrich?
The communications committee met with our colleagues from BOCES and we reviewed the plans that they offered, that we built a short-term and a long-term communications plan. The short-term plan, you've already seen actually some of those outputs, which included a letter to all families about the building utilization plan as well as the launch of a website that helps families navigate where we are in the process of many moving parts. We've received support of a new consultant from BOCES as well and that person will begin to look at both the survey that we did a year ago, a year and a few months back, from families who indicated, would you part in that survey? About how they'd like to be communicated with? And the suggestion was that we augment that with a new survey. This survey is considered what they call a scope survey. And some of you who have been on the board for more than a year will remember that BOCES services included a scope survey. So it's outside of our own families' email list that we have within the district, but it actually includes all of the community members as well. And they do outreach through social media and other ways to try to get as many people to participate as possible. We decided, even though it's a busy time of year, to just get that survey out as soon as possible. So we're gonna, the earliest that they can do it is the week after Thanksgiving. And it will be extending through the end of the calendar year. If we need, if we don't get a good response and we need to push it further, we will. But our hope is that we can get those results as quickly as possible. As soon as we have that information, we'll share it broadly. And the survey will then inform the longer-term plan that the BOCES colleagues will be helping us develop.
Anything I'm forgetting? Great, thank you. Any other committees? I mean, obviously, policy committees, because we have the results of that in our agendas. Item 17.01, old business. Does anybody have old business? Item 18.01, new business. Trustee Goodrich?
Yeah, so I was looking at some of the other school districts and how they communicate. And it's interesting, Rochelle, they only have one newsletter that goes out once a year to find out. And they communicate actually quite a lot with newsletters that are only online. So, and then their social media, they have a Facebook page. It would be interesting, I hope they do the survey. We'll also ask students how they like to communicate. You know, George Shelling also has Facebook, Instagram.
We have Instagram as well.
Yeah.
Trustee Goodrich, review, did you attend the lunchtime seminar webinar that NISPA did on that topic? Or did you review that?
Yeah, the online webinar.
Yeah, yeah, it was very good.
That was a little good. So I know over the years we have different number of newsletters and letters that go out. Do we have a plan for newsletters that are going to be going out this year?
Generally, it's quarterly.
Trustee Jerome?
In communications meeting, we have been discussing email as a tool to connect with people and let them know what's going on. We're actually in the process of trying to build this for people who are hidden out of district so we can send more regular communications on reconfiguration. And I think it is definitely on our radar to have those, what we would call marketing communications coming into email rather than social necessary. We're trying to figure out what those programs look like and what those lists look like. And we do already have a survey. I think that indicated that people do like to get digital communications and we always want to, for accessibility purposes, have the print version coming up more frequently than once a year. But also just throwing it out to anybody who might be listening that even there will be an opportunity, we hope that we're going to be, it will be on the webpage that's being created that's going to keep people abreast of what's happening with reconfiguration. But an opportunity to sign up, to produce basically. And we'll encourage you to do that so that we are reaching people more effectively and not leaning so heavily on social media.
Trustee Goodrich?
So, yeah, that's a great page that's out there already. I'm just not sure how people know it exists, it's out there. But, you know, if we know it's there, I mean, you won't know unless you look for it.
Yeah, I think that's our, that's our concern, you know, and that's why one of the major goals of the communications committee is to try to engage with people who are not parents or teachers or staff. You know, people that are thousands of people out there in our, in our school district who are community members, are community members that don't know much about, you know, what we're up to. Trustee Jerome?
And I think we have also discussed the possibility or the likelihood of using QR codes at events and doing, you know, whether it be prevail or something where people can scan and then go to that page. I don't think it made it into this quarterly newsletter, but certainly you're right. But again, either it has to be a community member or we're going to try to make QR codes, that technology work to help us as well.
Trustee Ramondo? Something I did that was super simple is I just took the email that we receive for all families and I forwarded to the people in the community that I know that are in the community of the district and they signed up. So it could just be as simple as opening up your home email list, taking a look through, seeing who your older friends are or younger friends are. If you don't have children, maybe that's a good first step that we can do on our own, before we decide to count them all.
Great idea, super simple, yeah. Trustee Goodrich?
So it's interesting, Rochelle, they actually, they're much better school. They actually have a PR that does communication. So that's, you know, but to get the word out, you know, we could have a what's new on our front page. And we'll point to this.
Right, we could use a pop-up when we're ready to do that. Be a great idea. Any other new business? Okay, item 19.01, any requests for information for the superintendent, for the superintendent? All right, item 20.01. May I have any motion to adjourn? Trustee Story, surprised? Second, trustee Goodrich? All in favor? All right, that's unanimous, thank you.
Our next meeting is December 12th at Bennett.